Everybody's ready. You had time. We're gonna call them up. Are you ready? Are you sure? Go ahead and finish up. All right. Okay. Good evening, everyone. Before I call the meeting to order, we will be doing something very special at every second meeting of the month. May I please call forward Noah Rodriguez, who is joining us as our first ever student mayor of the day? Sit down beside me. Thank you. Student Mayor for the Day is a new partnership program between the city and parent Unified School District. Every month, different schools in our district will select a deserving fourth or fifth grader to join us as a student mayor for the day. As a student mayor, they will help us call the meeting to order and lead the pledge. Now Noah and I, we call the meeting to order on October 22, 2024. Bang the gavel. Okay, Noah. Now, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Everyone, please stand.
Ready? Begin.
On our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Noah. You are going to ask Madam City Court.
Absolutely. Councilmember Aguayo.
Here.
Councilmember Olmos.
Here.
Councilmember Quay Stallings.
Present.
Vice Mayor Lemmons.
Here.
Student Mayor Noah Rodriguez. Mayor Delgado.
Present. Thank you. Next, we will be sharing a quick video from the Public Safety Expo on October 12. Everyone had a wonderful time getting to know our safety personnel and enjoying all the activities. Let's check it out. That was wonderful. Thank you. Thank you. Would my fellow colleagues please join me at the podium as we recognize our student mayor of the day? Okay. Noah Rodriguez is a dedicated fifth grader from Jefferson Elementary, who was selected for his impressive commitment to his school and community. With perfect attendance since kindergarten, Noah's reliability has made him a role model for his classmates. As a junior coach during recess, he not only encourages teamwork and sportsmanship, but also fosters a sense of fun among his peers. Recently elected to the Student Council President for this school year, Noah is passionate about representing his fellow students and making positive changes in their school. His leadership qualities and unwavering dedication make him a deserving candidate for this special role. We at the city are proud to present you with this gavel and certificate to commemorate your hard work. Noah, if you wish, would you like to say a few words? Okay, come on.
I just wanted to say, I'm proud of what I've done and I want to thank my mom to help me get here.
And your gavel's right here.
You ready for a picture?
Okay, let's take a picture now. Come on. Right in front of the podium. Leslie will tell you how to stand. Yeah. Yeah. She needs to hold the gavel. Okay, sweetheart. There.
Mayor, would you mind?
Yeah, I don't mind.
Okay, Nick, we can just switch over here.
Okay, right there. Okay. Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor.
My friends, one, two, three. One more. One, two, three. That's perfect. Good job.
Yay!
This is so cute.
You're in the hallway counting. Lost your mom again. Wait a minute, the mom wants to take a picture with your mom. A future leader here.
Oh, with mama? Okay, yes, definitely.
Yes.
Good job, mom.
Friends, one, two, three. Take one more. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Should we go ahead and get her to have it in the back? Is that okay with you?
Yeah, let's get the whole family in the back.
Okay.
Yes, yes. We're gonna do it right here.
Yes. Yeah. If I can have counsel.
This is special. Let's do that. Yes. Thank you.
I can make sure you get a card to give it to us.
That works. Are we good?
Yes, we're looking great. All right. Right over here first, friends. One, two, three at this camera. Awesome. We're gonna take one more. One, two, three. Everyone's smiling. Awesome. Thank you.
Hold on, let me do this one. Sorry.
One more.
Okay. Got it.
Yay! I know.
Okay, that was wonderful. Thank you so much. And this concludes our presentation for this evening. Now, we'll take a 10-minute break and we'll resume shortly. Okay? Thank you. Updates from the last city council meeting.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. I do have three comment updates. First, starting with the resident from the Town Center Terrace. The request was for the city to impose rent control for all seniors living in the city. And the action comment, and I will summarize. Staff did meet with the managing supervisor, management team of the Town Center Terrace to discuss their current billing structure. That was one of the concerns relayed by the tenants. Previously, the management company had been freezing rents for the current year rent increases. And what they started doing instead was to charge residents separately for the utilities, which included water, trash, and pest control. So that was one of the reasons for the higher rents that were reported by the residents. Additionally, we learned that the property is currently made up of about 70% Section 8 tenants, and they are still open to receiving more Section 8 applications based on the available units they might have. So staff is still waiting for more information. We've requested information such as what has been their past years' rent increases. We're also in the process of connecting their onsite management staff with our staff at the senior center in hopes of establishing a positive relationship and dialogue, open communication going forward. Secondly, we had several residents speak on behalf of MH Action requesting the city impose rent control. That's not limited to mobile home parks, but citywide. They also spoke about the city considering rent freezes until consideration of a rent control ordinance as well as protection from tenants, protection from landlords who harass tenants, and specific concerns made about 15325 Orange Avenue, one of the mobile home properties in the city. So as follow-up, staff has continued to conduct research on the mobile home properties in the city and their past activity relating to rent increases. Staff has been in communication with MH Action, some tenants, to explain the research is ongoing. It will take some time. The staff evaluates data and evaluates and present options. And we are also working on arranging meetings with the respective property owners at those mobile home parks, including at Orange Avenue Mobile Home Park.
Okay. Is that the end of the meeting?
Lastly, the email comment made from Mr. Mike Raddus regarding enforcement of a hazardous waste facility on Vermont Avenue. Staff has been in communication with the resident through email and phone calls on the same matter, which we agree that we don't agree. And as of last week, the transfer station is in compliance with the DTSC regulations. The city is still proceeding with the unclassified use permit, as was approved at the last council meeting. It'll be scheduled before the planning commission sometime next year. The other follow-up to that request was for the city to process records requests in a timely manner. And since last year, June 2023, there's been a total of 22 public records requests submitted by the resident. 16 of those requests are complete. Three, six are outstanding. Three were just submitted late September, one earlier this month. And where compliance is required by law and the other two are outstanding are just a high volume and require more time. That concludes the public comment summary. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Chavez. Ms. Chavez, are there any speaker cards at this moment?
Yes, we have three speaker cards. All of them are for item number nine. So those will be, they will receive an opportunity to speak during that item on the agenda.
Okay.
And one of them will be read into the record.
All righty, thank you. Now we'll go to...
Excuse me. I'm sorry. We had one written public comment submitted not related to item nine.
Yes, I do apologize. We do have one written comment. Thank you.
My pleasure. The comment is from Jared Gonzalez. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Jared Gonzalez. I represent the Western Manufactured Housing Communities Association, WMA. WMA is the statewide nonprofit trade association representing California mobile home park owners and operators. Mobile home park owners in Paramount are generally good owners who provide affordable homeownership opportunities to residents. Rents are reasonable and lower than comparable single-family home rentals and two-bedroom apartments. When park residents fall on hard times, many park owners have rental assistance programs in place or use third-party programs to work with them until they can get back on their feet. Evictions are rare and usually occur in extreme cases, such as gross rules violations or non-payment of rent for several months. Further, unlike apartments, the state mobile home residency law has just caused evictions built into it. Finally, WMA is available to help connect the city with park owners should the city inquire about something that concerns them. We have a good history of doing that and will continue doing so. Problems are best solved by gathering facts and working collaboratively to identify solutions if required. It is for these reasons and the fact that there is no widespread evidence of rent hikes or evictions, despite what some are saying, that there is also no need to consider a costly and burdensome rent control ordinance. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll move on to the consent calendar. Ms. Luce, may we have roll call, please? Excuse me. Motion. Excuse me.
Second.
Okay, now may we have a roll call. Thank you.
Councilmember Aguayo?
Yes.
Councilmember Olmos?
Yes.
Councilmember Quayre Stallings?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lemmons?
Yes.
Mayor Delgado.
Yes. Now we move on to new business. Our first item of new business is consideration of resolution number twenty-four point zero three nine, approving a request by Kate's Corner for the amendment to a permit for live entertainment at eighty-four hundred Alondra Boulevard. Ms. Chavez, we have a report, please.
Yes, good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. This item is a request by Kate's Corner for an amendment to a city council permit for live entertainment, the address of eighty-four hundred Alondra Boulevard. This is located in the southeast corner of Alondra Boulevard and Indiana Avenue. As background, in September of twenty twenty-two, the city council approved a resolution to allow karaoke on Saturdays and Mondays. The applicant is now requesting an amendment to their permit to allow extended hours on Saturdays and add an additional day of Sundays. I will now turn it over to Mr. John King to present further details of the report. And if the applicant is in attendance this evening, they will be able to provide comments following staff's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager Chavez and Council. So you'll remember a couple of years ago, the applicant came before you, and you approved a city council permit for live entertainment, for karaoke. And this is a request to extend the days and the hours. Of course, eighty-four hundred of Alondra. It's at the, you know, corner of Alondra and Indiana. And it's, it's within the Plaza Gamino. Some facts here, acre site, and their suite is one thousand four hundred and twenty-eight square feet. It's on the corner. A little bit of history, so they opened for business in twenty eighteen, and it's kind of evolved. They were first Kate's Ice Cream, and Kate with a K, that became Kate with a C. And they opened as a, strictly as an ice cream and dessert shop after completing some work, some work on the inside. It did take some work. It was previously, I believe, a cleaner's years ago. That did not take any special permits. And then when they wanted to add some tables, make it a restaurant, add a full kitchen with, specializing in Thai food, they applied for a conditional use permit, twenty twenty-one, in twenty twenty-one. And the planning commission approved that CUP. And that also included beer and wine sales, so they are permitted with, also with the Department of, California Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control for beer and wine. So a few months later, ABC did approve, did approve their application. So they, they do serve beer. Twenty twenty-two, that's when you, the city council, so the way our municipal code sets it up, the city council reviews applications for live entertainment. You approved a resolution, and that approval allows for karaoke Saturdays from four P M. to nine P M. And Mondays from two P M. to nine P M. So they're before you to add a little more time. They would like to extend the hours on Saturdays, just a couple more hours from, instead of the nine P M. closure, adding a couple more hours to eleven P M., then adding Sundays from two to nine. The extended Saturday hours, but I'd actually be contingent upon, if you were to approve this request this evening, they would also have to amend their conditional use permit. They would have to go back to the planning commission because the planning commission has a cutoff time in their CUP for nine P M. So that added couple hours would require a CUP. So you could, you could approve, and they could begin with on Sundays. But they, it would take some time to get to the planning commission, get that approval, and kick in the, that extra two hours on Saturdays. A few pictures of some of their nice food that they're offering there, tom yum beer. Here's a look at, two things you're seeing here. You're seeing a floor plan and you're seeing a photo. So on the left is, is the floor plan. So at the top of this is where the parking lot is. So north is on the top, Alondra is, you know, north of that. So not the biggest of spaces, it, they're very efficient with their space. And in red would be where the, where the karaoke area is. That, that does not change with this application with the extended hours. You could see, so on the right is the photo, so you could see, you know, they have some balloons. It's, it's really festive. It's, it's a nice time if you have the opportunity to join them for karaoke. Going back to the aerial photo, so in the highlighted in yellow is their suite. So there's a few other businesses, a beauty salon, Boulevard Cocktails, a liquor convenience store, liquor slash convenience store, a couple others, market, restaurant. So we did take a good review, as required by our code. The sheriff's department, the public safety department took a look. They reviewed the application. They have no objections. They looked at past incidents, or if there were any incidents, there have been none. They are in very good standing. They're in good standing in terms of law enforcement. They're in good standing, again, with, with ABC, the state. We do recommend a six-month review. You know, I should back up. I should point out that upon your original approval, there was a condition at that time for a six-month review. And the public safety department did conduct that six-month review, six months after they started the karaoke. And it was a very positive review, and they've been continuing ever since. So as we customarily do, staff recommends a six-month review with the, with a change of the, slight change to the hours. And I should say, the format is typically a hosted format. They have a KJ, which is a karaoke jockey, Tyler. So we recommend that you read by title only, adopt resolution twenty-four oh three nine, subject to the conditions of approval, which includes the conditions about the six-month review and other conditions to make sure, to safeguard the community. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any comments from council? Yes, go ahead.
John, do we look at the, the parking lot is very small there. And right now, so we have a full liquor store. We have, actually have boulevards. We have a restaurant. So with extending the hours, do we have any issues of the parking? Maybe where clients may start parking on Indiana in front of residence houses? Have we looked at anything like that?
Well, we looked at the track record of complaints. We have, we're unaware of any community complaints. More, we get more complaints about the block of a certain restaurant at Downey and Alondra, sometimes the apartment complex to the south. But interestingly enough, none for neither this karaoke, city council permit for karaoke for live entertainment, nor the, their neighbor in the same plaza, Boulevard Cocktails. There, there are actually no complaints. Not, no recent complaints for Boulevard Cocktails, I should say.
So you're saying no, you haven't heard any concern?
Yeah, that's the long version of saying no.
Oh, that's good. It's good to hear that the business is in good standing, too. That was one of my questions I was going to ask, but you answered it. That was good.
We did.
All right, anyone else in council? All right, may we have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Ms. Luce, may you have roll call, please?
Councilmember Aguayo?
Yes.
Councilmember Olmos?
Yes.
Councilmember Quayre Stallings?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lemmons?
Yes.
Mayor Delgado.
Yes. Now we have consideration of resolution twenty-four point zero three eight, approving a request by Mr. Jay's Bar for a permit for live entertainment at seventy-eight twenty-four Alondra Boulevard. Ms. Chavez, may we have a report, please?
Yes, good evening again, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. This item is a request by Mr. Jay's Bar for a city council permit for live entertainment. That includes a karaoke DJ and live band option at seventy-eight twenty-four Alondra Boulevard, located at the southwest corner of Alondra Boulevard and Colorado Avenue. And as background, in March of last year, the Development Review Board did approve a remodel to the exterior of the existing building. That also includes an additional thirteen hundred square foot additional expansion that is currently underway, as you may see out there. The applicant is requesting a city council permit to allow the live entertainment every day of the week between the hours of nine P M. to one thirty A M. And it is that you will hear from staff in a little bit. The city is recommending that entertainment be limited to the weekends only to start. And thereafter, staff would conduct a six-month review to evaluate any impacts from the operation, consider adding additional days at a later time. And in front of you, staff did provide a hard copy of revised set of conditions. If you take-
So just to give you some background on what has happened in the past. In twenty twenty-two, the planning commission approved conditional use permit number nine two one. Essentially, this was, historically, this was a beer-wine establishment. But under new ownership, the, the vision of the new business owner, they wanted to offer a full line of alcohol, which includes distilled spirits. So they upgraded their license along with ABC. This was a moment where the planning commission and staff could review this new, you know, request for distilled spirits, but also implement any new type of conditions of approval that maybe were not present during the original operation of the bar. So one of those conditions was an exterior remodel to the outside. As you can see in the picture in the middle there, that's how Mr. Jay's used to look like. And there was a vacant portion that was, that was empty on the property. So this was in compliance with the Central Business District to upgrade the outside. So in twenty twenty-three, the applicant came back. Not only did they propose to remodel to the outside, they also redid the inside layout. And in addition to that, they also proposed a thirteen hundred square foot addition to the building, which is part of that vacant land. So just to give you some idea of, back in twenty twenty-two, that's what it used to look like. So you're looking south on, on Alondra Boulevard there. It was in need of a remodel. I mean, this is, you know, Alondra Boulevard, major corridor there. So in twenty twenty-four, this is what it looks like now. I know, you know, you can see some construction material and scaffolds. But they're busy remodeling the, the exterior. They're, they're still adding a few finishing touches, but it's getting underway. They pulled all the necessary permits for, for this construction, so it's, yeah, it's in progress. And just examining the floor plan here, a closer look. As you can see on the left-hand side, that's the original footprint of, of the building. So sixteen hundred, a little over sixteen hundred square feet, with a completely different layout. Now, on the right-hand side is the portion of the new, the addition that was done to this, to the building. The thirty-three customer seats, that remained the same, so that was no change. Now, it's worth mentioning, there's two pool tables that you see on the floor plan. That was, originally, there were three pool tables in Mr. Jay's Bar. The applicant, at the time when they were going through the entitlement process, there was two that were left. So that was pretty much the maximum. They ended up losing one. So the maximum pool tables, which is down to two. And just to give you, you know, the reason for the live entertainment is, so as you can see in the, in the circle there in the yellow, that's the area of the live entertainment that will, will occur. It's kind of hard to see, but there is, there's a blue line actually going over. Essentially, there's a wall there, so it's open on, on only one side, and it's enclosed on three sides for this, for this area for live entertainment. And kind of just going over the, the floor plan here with the layout. On the north side, which is open to Alondra Boulevard, that's the main entry door to this establishment. There are two emergency exits on the south side of the building and on the east side. So the south side opens up to a residence. And then the, the east side, on the right-hand side, opens up to Colorado Avenue. It's worth mentioning that there is a condition, condition of approval that will require these doors to remain closed at all times. This is part of the original CUP, and we're actually emphasizing that on this resolution. So any type of operations, and then now with the request of live entertainment, these doors should be remain closed at all times. And then just finalizing, the total floor area here now measures two thousand nine hundred and ninety-two square feet. And here's a satellite view of the subject site. So as you can see in the yellow box, that's the property for Mr. Jay's Bar. Initially, there were nine parking spaces on this property, but with the development of the new addition, the applicant was able to squeeze in another additional parking space. So there's, there's a total of ten onsite. Now, with the live entertainment request, it was a little bit viewed, a little bit different from their previous entitlements. So with the conversations with the business owner and along with the, an agreement essentially with the Heinz, so on the east side of the property there, on the red, that will be essentially used. There's a parking agreement in place that will be used as overflow parking. And there are thirty-two parking spaces on that lot. Now, given that Heinz, the Portuguese Hall, they do have their fair share of events. So in the event that, that's not viable option for patrons for subject site to use that parking lot. On the right-hand side, so the Town Center West, they're off of Colorado Avenue, there is a designated city parking that's, can be used for the public. So those are two options for, for the parking that is in this, within this area that in the event that there's substantial parking needed, there, there are some options. So going back to what the applicant is requesting, it's a little bit ambitious. I think we, we have not seen some type of schedule like this in the past. So they're proposing seven days a week with, between the hours of nine P M. and one thirty A M. The business has been dormant for many years, so there's really no way of knowing what the demand will be. So what the applicant is essentially envisioning is to have the option to have different types of live entertainment in the forms of karaoke, live band, or DJ, based on the demand. So this is what they're initially proposing. Now, given that it's, it's unheard of, of some type of request like this. So we had to get, planning staff had to get creative on how we can do some research before it gets down to, you know, before you this evening. So we had to get a little creative, and we actually came up with a solution. And that solution was to conduct a survey. So we did some public outreach. We conducted an eight-question survey. The purpose of the survey was to gather feedback to assess the residents, which, their interests. How did they feel about the live entertainment being proposed here? And to get a better understanding on the concerns regarding noise, crowd management, and any potential disruptions. Twenty surveys were distributed, which is essentially twenty properties that we went to. There is a copy, so we included a Q R. code. We had to go door to door, and sometimes people did answer, sometimes they didn't. So we left a copy of the survey on the door. The Q R. code was there. The purpose of that Q R. code was that if they weren't able, we weren't able to reach them, they could respond online using Survey Monkey. And then there was also the address to City Hall, to planning staff, and my contact information was actually included. So they could reach out to us at a different time if we weren't able to reach them. A Spanish version of the survey was also left to just broaden the, the outreach. Now, this is, on the left-hand side is a copy of that survey. And I just want to just briefly mention what kind of questions were asked there. Something like, how comfortable are you with Mr. Jay's having live entertainment? Would you prefer live entertainment to occur? Like, how often the days? How important is the volume level? And then any other, we left open in the question, are there any specific measures you would like to see the city impose upon Mr. Jay's Bar? So keeping it simple, but narrowing it down to, you know, what, what we have here for the live entertainment. So there were two dates that public, the public outreach was conducted, on July twelfth and then September twelfth. There was one online submittal on August twelfth, so, you know, the Q R. code, they come in handy. Overall, there was seven out of the twenty completed surveys were submitted, so that's a thirty-five percent response rate. And just to break down what those numbers are, there was one response that didn't necessarily oppose it, but they emphasized a strict city measures to monitor any concerns for this live entertainment. Two were strictly opposed to the live entertainment, and then four were neither opposed or in support of it. They're essentially neutral, on the neutral side of things. So this is the, the results in a nutshell. And then just to give you an idea of what the area of the outreach was. So in the red there, those were the properties that we, we went out door to door and talked to, or at least attempted to talk to several people there. On the second outreach, on September twelfth, we reviewed some of the, some of the responses were coming in. We already gathered some of it, but we wanted to reach out again. And then we included the properties on the left, on the west side of Vermont. There's three single-family properties. So the majority of these properties are single families, of single-family homes. And I want to point out that there are apartments on the west side of Vermont and on the south side of, well, the north side of Monroe Street. Those apartments, we did not go to those simply because there's a lot of units there. And we didn't want the survey to skew based on the renters. If someone was, let's say, moving now, they took the survey, and then they felt, you know, one way about it. It was sort of an outlier to, that would skew our data. So it was, we narrowed it down to just the single-family homes that essentially are owners of the property. Now, there could be some renters on these properties, but we figured these are the ones that would be greatly impacted by this live entertainment. And just to give you an idea of how the people responded, the closer the property was to the establishment, the more they did not like this request. And then further away, it was just- the establishment, the more they did not like this request, and then further away was just, you know, more neutral. So, that's the area that we covered. So, for public safety, the Public Safety Department and the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department reviewed the application and made several recommendations. Now, this is going back to the CUP of this establishment, and then also just emphasizing that a little bit more in the resolution before you. So, the use of security cameras, there is a security camera plan in place. Strictly no loitering outside the premises at all, anytime strictly prohibited. And then, as I mentioned, the doors, those two emergency doors, exits, that will have to be closed at all times. Now, there is something, as Griselle mentioned, about the additional security guard to patrol the overflow parking lots. That's something that we, as staff, as we got closer to this date, we felt it was more appropriate to have additional security there. There is one security guard in place at the main entry door that will be, that's part of the CUP process approval that is required to have one, one at the moment, but two would be, you know, better for security reasons. So, we take into consideration the survey that was conducted, we take into consideration what the applicant is requesting. So, the staff recommendation is to reduce the hours to, essentially the days of the live entertainment to occur on Friday and Saturday. Karaoke, DJ live, and live band, again, no more than three members in the trio. So, two days out of the week with these hours, the same hours that have been proposed from 9:00 PM to 1:30 AM. This seems to fall in line with the historical live entertainment permits that have been approved in the past. And we revised condition of approval number three to really be specific to the live band to three members or less. So, with that, as you saw before you, the item before you, there is a six-month review for this city council permit if approved. It could be less time too, depending on the demand, or if there's anything that comes that is, you know, urgent matter. So, at the six-month review, we would look at the possibility of expanding the days to the, you know, maybe the applicant's request, getting closer to that. So, that's only if there's no complaints have been made, or the business is in good standing. And this is to ensure long-term compliance with conditions of approval and to safeguard the surrounding neighborhood. So, in summary, this is what was done to get here to this evening. It took quite some time to gather all the data and just back and forth conversations with the, with the business owner. So, with that, we're recommending to re-buy title only and adopt resolution number 24038 with the new conditions too, that's in front of you, those two revised conditions. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions. The applicant is here in the audience and would like to make a statement, so, yeah, this concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Riz. Comments, anyone?
Yes, we would allow public comments now, and we could start with the applicant and then follow with the rest of the speakers on the item.
I have a question for staff before you do the public comments. One of the things I didn't hear you mention in the setup was like a special sound wall, like, I know that we required that at Casa Adelita. Did that require one?
So, there is, they're in the middle of redoing their whole inside, and there was something that the applicant, that came up. They did provide special insulation to reduce the noise in that area, pretty much the south side of the building, to reduce the noise, amplifying or just, you know, that humming sound that you hear outside of a building. They really added a lot of insulation and any type of material to reduce the noise.
I don't know that that's what they put in over at Casa. I don't know if anybody recalls that, but I thought it had to be a certain distance from the neighborhood, and it required special sound walls because what they originally had, which was heavy insulation, did not work.
Right. That, so it's not a standard condition for entertainment in the past. That's the only instance where staff recommended and the city council, we were actually responding to, they were initially approved. Right, we were initially, they were initially approved for entertainment, and it was too loud, and there was some incidents. So, and the, one of the solutions, in addition to adding more landscaping to, as a buffer, was to have that second door, that secondary door installed.
Yeah, I guess my point is that was one place we did have it right next to neighborhood, and we were just bombarded with complaints.
That's the, that's the one that does stand out, yes.
Kwayar Stallings, you had a question?
Yes, so you're, the business owner wanted every day, correct?
That's correct.
Entertainment, but you're recommending two days.
Two days.
Friday and Saturday.
That's right.
I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Councilmember.
Oh, no, I want to hear public comments.
Okay, yeah, and I have a question, just a question. What clientele will this Mr. J's bar want to focus on? The clientele, what type of clientele are they looking for? Do you happen to know?
He, we did have that conversation in the past, and maybe the applicant could expand on that a little bit. He does have a vision of like a 1920s, sort of like prohibition era type of theme on the inside. That is to be determined with, you know, how it's marketed and things like that. But I believe maybe the applicant can expand a little bit.
I was just curious, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
So, now, I believe the applicant, Mr. Alfredo Lopez, is in attendance, and he can come up now to make comments.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Alfredo Lopez. I've been invested in the community since 1991, when I started working for Paramount Unified School District, I was a substitute custodian, and worked my way up to a research analyst and director. I resigned about a year and a half ago to focus on Mr. J's bar. I took every measure I could into making sure that we don't disturb the neighbors with sound quality. We designed the layout of the building with the restrooms against the walls and highly put specialized foam insulation on the walls. We are also, we also have an in-house speaker system, so we can control the volume. So, if there's a karaoke or a DJ that comes in, or anybody else, we can control that volume. They can't go over a certain amount or a certain volume, so we definitely want to make sure our neighbor is taken care of. Other than that, I mean, I have another bar, my demographic is usually people in their 30s to 40s. We don't really cater to young kids, it's more of a cocktail bar environment. But I did request every day just to have that option available, but usually my focus would have been like Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. But that's why I requested every day, just to have as an option for a special event, Super Bowl Sunday, different things that might come up.
Any questions from council? Any further?
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. I will now call on the next speaker, Ms. Susanna Alcaraz.
Good evening, Mayor de la Día, City Council. My name is Susanna Alcaraz. I live at 15915 Colorado Avenue, which is a property away from Mr. J's. I come to you as a mother. My concern with this bar and the live music is what's going to come with it in my neighborhood. I know when they were doing the survey, I was one of the people that answered the door. I told them how I felt, they talked about using the parking lot next door, and they did mention with the Heinz Hall that they'll use it there. And I asked them, well, what about when they have functions? And so, they didn't have an answer, they came up with one, which was be parking across the street from my house. I have young kids. People that go to bars don't necessarily leave in all their senses, so my concern is the traffic it's going to cause, my, the safety concerns. And as I noticed today, where they are setting up the live music, it's just a wall going towards the neighborhood. So, they didn't have a concrete answer as if they had a specialized, like you said, for sound barrier, and I don't see it happening. Foam, I don't, I'm, I'm just very pessimistic about the whole situation. When people leave a bar, they're loud, they're leaving at 1:30 in the morning, they're going to be parking on our street or across the way. We have cars that we have, our own personal cars are parked on the street, and so, things that could happen. Drunk drivers. The owner did say he's going to encourage his people to Uber. I don't know how he's going to encourage people that don't know him and go to the bar to encourage, to, excuse me, to use an Uber driver. It's just, I'm strictly opposed to it because of the safety issues that it's going to have on our neighborhood, the loudness, people leaving. I don't know, it's just something that I don't want in my neighborhood, and I spoke with other, my other neighbors, and they're opposed to it as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
That was it for comments at the podium. We do have two comments for public record to be read by our city clerk.
Thank you. The first comment is from Linda Willemsi on Colorado Avenue also. We have enough issues in the neighborhood with traffic, cars, and foot. I am afraid of the live entertain, I'm afraid the live entertainment will draw more customers, therefore more problems. That concludes that comment. The next comment is from Sonia Chavez, also on Colorado Avenue. My name is Sonia Chavez. I reside at 15927 Colorado Avenue in the city of Paramount. My contact number, I'll not repeat that out loud. I am responding to the request made by Mr. J's for live entertainment permit. I have been a resident of Paramount for 40-plus years. I am writing to express my concern for potential approval of the request for a live entertainment permit for Mr. J's. My main concern is related to the safety and security of the local residential neighborhood. As we know, progressing into today's day and age, tendencies for increased violence are known to escalate in an environment where live events occur coupled with alcohol consumption. I am concerned about the number of people that the establishment will attract with a live venue. An additional concern that I raise is the lack of parking. Currently, there are approximately eight designated parking spaces on Mr. J's property. This will filter into the neighborhood and leave opportunities for loitering and other concerning risky activity, with my main concern being the safety and well-being of the residents of this neighborhood, including myself. I hope you take our survey response and other testimonies into consideration when making your final decision. Thank you for your time, Sonia Chavez. That concludes the comments.
So, be no further comments, the matters turn back to council for discussion.
Okay. Comments?
Yeah, definitely. So, I'll just give my, my comment here. So, 35% of a data survey doesn't do anything for me. It's not even 50%. And I just, when we give that opportunity for residents, I need, I hope that they take that survey because that kind of helps us, and it just makes it sad that only 35% is what we got back. I'm, again, I'm all about bringing new stuff to the city. I'm the first one to be like, hey, let me go check it out, because I love bringing this new stuff to our city. But I also have to think about too, what lines with that residential community of Mr. J's. In the history of Mr. J's, it was more like an older kind of hangout crowd with, I don't want to say senior citizens, but there was an older type of population that would go there. So, it was more calmer, kind of like watching playing pool. Again, with this, it's, I'm excited that you're trying to do something, but for me, council, again, I would like us maybe just to start with karaoke to get it started. You know what I mean? Try it out for six months, because a live band and, and, you know, DJ, but a live band does bring a different type of audience, you know what I mean? And I know when you mean trio, I don't know if you mean a banda, or if you mean a norteño, like, it could be a lot for a three-man band. But again, I'm just thinking about the neighborhood, I'm thinking about call responses, if these people are trying to call LA County Sheriff to get them for noise, you know, we got to, you know, our response time, they're busy. Our guys are really busy to be trying to go break up something at a bar, or we got other things going on. So, again, council, I'm looking at you guys, I'm just trying to say maybe, you know, we start them off with maybe just karaoke for Friday and Saturday, let's see how it goes for six months, and then we can have discussion after that. So, I'll leave it at that.
I have a comment, Madam Mayor. I don't have a lot to add, what council member almost just said. It's pretty much the same thing in my notes. We never had complaints from Mr. J's in all the years that I can remember, and possibly that was due to the clientele. But because of that, I'm willing to give some leeway because there weren't complaints there. But I am very much on board with, we start with karaoke, because I feel that gives you an equal footing with the other bars and entertainment places in the area. That's pretty much what they have. I do believe that when you go to live entertainment or DJs, that's when things start to change up. I would be on the same platform. I, I don't recall how many days a week, because again, I'm thinking of equal footing, was karaoke available at Kate's? Is that weekends only?
Two days, yes.
A week on Friday, Saturday?
Saturdays and Mondays, and they were requesting to add Sundays, so it would be three.
Yeah, the Friday, Saturday are probably the busiest time. But the other concern that I have is, although I would be in favor of that, I'm not in favor of till 1:30 in the morning either, again, as a trial basis. I'm not somebody who goes to bars, so I don't know typically what would be okay, but I'm going to say midnight, you know, would be, be the latest. Everybody else can kind of weigh in, and I would be okay with starting with the karaoke. I do think it's important for the audience member, you know, a lot of the things that were described were just about having a bar in the neighborhood, and less entertainment. They're legally zoned to have a bar there, and there's always been a bar there, so we can't do anything about preventing a bar from being there. Just about new restrictions for new ask, so I just want you to understand the situation that we're in. So, hopefully I've made my position clear, Madam Mayor.
Yes, you have. Comments from Kwayar Stallings, ma'am, do you have anything? I'll go ahead. You did, not at this time?
Yeah, I guess, you know, to start, I think that we do need to start with, with something, and we do need to listen to the residents that are there. The concern, yeah, that we're hearing is, I definitely agree, is that there is a bar there, but Mr. J's has been there since I can remember. And again, we do have, you know, there's other, other locations in the city, so I think that, you know, if we start, we do, we start with the karaoke, so we're not, you know, we're not going to, we're not necessarily saying no, but we, we start with this, we see how it goes, and then it can be reviewed, which is, you know, why we have the six months. Just again, to see just where we're at with it, and how the community responds to it as well, and what the, what the requests are.
Thank you. Yes, and I am also in favor of the karaoke for two days as a beginning to start for the six months. Let's, let's give it a trial basis. You had something to say?
Yes, and also, Alfredo, I think you need to do small steps, especially in our community, and especially you have residents around you. And I think, I think that would be the best thing for right now, is for you to start with the karaoke two days a week, Alfredo, and then from there, after your six-month review, you can come back to us, and, you know, we'll move forward from there. Yes.
Yes, you have a comment, yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to reiterate the in-house sound system, which is connected to the karaoke, I mean, the jukebox. So, if it's a DJ, it's still at a lower level, or as a jukebox. So, say on Wednesday, we have jukeboxes, we have a jukebox, they'll be playing at the same level. The DJ, because they'll do video mixes with, on the TVs and screens, we installed maybe six eight-inch speakers strategically to point out to Alondra to not have any back flow to the neighbor in the wall, and with that, with the installation. And as far as, we do encourage, we will do a program for, like, encouraging Uber by offering a discount, posting a wall saying, hey, if you show us your Uber receipt, you know, before you close out, we'll give you a discount, things like that, to alleviate people driving and parking. But yeah, the, I would prefer to have a DJ than the karaoke, because we can control the volume, it's the same thing as a jukebox playing, really. It's just somebody selecting the songs instead of customers selecting the songs. And we have the volume controlled, so there's, there shouldn't be an issue with that.
I'm sorry, so, I'm sorry, so when you're saying a DJ, so you're not going to have somebody there playing an actual record, I'm sorry, I'm doing that because of the spin.
No, they don't, we don't do that.
So, there's no, oh, okay. Hey, where have I been? But, so, so you're not, you have a jukebox, that's your DJ?
Well, we have a jukebox all day long. But on the days we'll have a DJ. But on the days we'll have a DJ, basically what they have is a little controller with the laptop and they just push buttons to select the songs that they want to play and mix.
Oh, that's your DJ.
So that's basically what it is.
So it's not a jukebox?
So it's similar to the sound of a jukebox because the levels will be controlled.
Sure, 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 sure.
So there's no difference between a jukebox on a Wednesday night to a DJ on a Friday night as far as sound quality or sound waves.
And Madam Mayor, if I could just comment?
Yes.
I, I understand what you're saying, however, I do believe there's a different response from the public, from a DJ to a jukebox or a, so that's where I'm concerned at, so I'm still at monitoring it as karaoke and regardless of what's voted on here, I would suggest that you spend as much time as possible talking to your neighbors during this trial period and getting feedback from them. Hey, how was the music this weekend? Was it okay? How were the customers? Did anybody bother you? Because they're, they're the ones that have to trust you and believe in you and feel free to call you if there's a problem.
Right.
And so that's where I would put my effort at, but I'm still not sold on the DJ thing only because I know just what you're talking about, but there's a different response from the audience to a live DJ.
Yeah, I spoke to the neighbor Roberto, he actually offered to let me borrow his piece of land behind his property to, for parking, so he's very aware. And I'm, that's my top priority is to make sure that I don't affect them. I guarantee you won't hear music coming out of Mr. J's as opposed to the Portuguese Hall. They have their doors open, they have the bands, you can hear that. We, you won't hear us.
Yeah, but the Portuguese Hall is like a special event. Yours is going to be happening like seven days a week, right?
Right, but that was, my concern is to make sure that it doesn't spew out of the building.
No, for sure. We appreciate that.
That's the report we hope to hear in six months.
Exactly, exactly. Vice Mayor, I just want to make sure because I know you also had a concern about the 1:30, so.
I'm not in favor of 1:30 in the morning.
I mean, closing time, what's last call?
Two, right?
Two, everybody has to be out by two, 1:45 is last call.
1:45 is last call, is it really 15 minutes before?
Yeah.
Oh, interesting, seems kind of, I mean, I don't have an issue with the 1:30 because I mean, I think it's kind of, most of the bars around in other cities has that as well, so.
They have a later time, I think.
Last call's at 1:30, but that's why the music stops at 1:30, but at 1:45, they stop serving, nobody serves anymore, 15 minutes after the leave. I have another bar in Downey.
Okay.
So I'm trying to, yeah.
Will your security guards be armed or unarmed?
Unarmed. Yeah, I don't like the.
A couple of places I go to, they're not bars, admittedly, but they have live entertainment where there are bars present, so.
That just gives it all different vibes.
And they cut off their entertainment at 11 so that people start settling down. So I'm still, I'm not in favor of anything going on till 1:30 in the morning in a neighborhood, that's my personal opinion.
All right. Any more comments?
Mr. Lopez, maybe you can also encourage, have a senior night because our seniors in Paramount love to dance and do karaoke. So you, you have a, a building just down the street from you, so if you want to have a senior night, I might be there, so.
Okay, for sure.
You're going to boogie?
I'm going to go out and boogie.
So Madam Mayor, I'm going to form a motion and we'll see where it goes from there. So I'm going to move that we approve a karaoke permit on Friday and Saturday nights for a six-month period with the music to end by midnight.
Yes, Madam Vice Mayor. Motion, please.
That's my motion.
That's your, okay.
Now you have to see if I get a second or you get an ulterior motion.
Is there a second?
And somebody needs to make an alternate motion, either second or an alternate motion.
I make a motion that we actually allow the karaoke on Friday and Saturday nights until 1:30 in the morning.
Second.
Okay, Ms. Lewis, may I please have roll call?
Councilmember Aguayo?
Yes.
Councilmember Almost?
Yes.
Councilmember Quayle Stallings?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lemmons?
No.
Mayor Delgado?
Yes.
That motion carries.
And the resolution will be amended accordingly.
Condition number three, yes.
Okay. All right, next, we have a report on the cost allocation and user fee study analysis. Ms. Chavez, we have a report, please.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening once again. In April of this year, the City Commissioned Revenue and Cost Specialist, LLC, also known as RCS, to prepare a cost allocation plan and comprehensive user fee study to identify the full costs of all city's operational services that are either charged a fee or could be charged a fee. The study outlines a proposed fee structure that recovers costs in the most equitable and efficient way possible. The City Council last approved a fee schedule in May of 2021. For tonight's meeting, staff has provided the City Council with the Cost Allocation Plan and User Fee Study. The intent this evening is to provide the City Council with an opportunity to offer any feedback, ask questions or share any concerns with the proposed fees and to streamline, streamline, streamline implementation at a later date. Staff would recommend that all the adopted fees become effective 60 days after approval. At the end of staff's report this evening, staff will request direction from the City Council to further present the Cost Allocation Plan and the User Fee Study at the next City Council meeting, which would be as a public hearing for consideration of approval of that user fee schedule. And Kim Sauer, Finance Director, will present this report and she will be joined by Eric Johnson with RCS team. Thank you, Kim.
Thank you, Ms. Chavez. I just wanted to note that cities generally conduct a fee study approximately every three to five years to ensure that the data used to calculate user fees accurately reflects the current cost of providing services. This latest fee study is especially important given the fact that there was a significant rise in inflation and the increasing cost of delivering services, which have made it even more necessary to reevaluate our fees to ensure that they remain fair and sustainable. Eric is here this evening to provide an introduction to the study and an overview of the results. So you were given a thick book of the result of that study, so during the presentation, please feel free to ask any question you may have from that book. I'll turn the time over to Eric.
We'll go through the entire book tonight.
Thank you, Kim. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm Eric Johnson, the President of Revenue and Cost Specialist, or RCS. So I'm happy to be here tonight to present to you this cost of services study. But first, just want to give a little background on RCS. We were founded in 1980, so we've been around for a long time. We were founded after Proposition 13 passed where governments actually had to know what their costs were. So we are really the pioneering firm that matched fee revenues with cost of services. And over the last 40, 43 years now, 44 years, we've done this in over 250 agencies in five different states.
Mr. Johnson, if I may ask, can you just be closer to the mics? So you can capture the sound more clearly, thank you.
All right, I'll speak louder too. All right, I myself have been doing this for 34 years, since 1990. I've worked with over 150 different agencies, mostly in California. My partner, Chu Tai, has been governmental experience as a budget manager, finance director for over 26 years, and so this is, this is what we do. So what is a cost study and why did we do it? Well, really, a cost study, we're recasting the city budget with a business orientation. We want to determine what are the costs of providing services to your customers. Governmental accounting does a great job of identifying what's the cost of the city manager's office, what's the cost of the planning department, what's the cost of public safety. It doesn't do a good job, it's not designed to identify what is the cost to provide individual services to your customers, to the public. That's what we've done through this process. And so through, throughout this report, you won't see a city council service, you won't see a city manager's service. They're all part of the overhead for all the costs that you see for all the other services that are provided directly to the public. It's like when you go to the grocery store, you buy a can of corn. You know when you buy that can of corn, that covers the cost of the grower, that covers the cost of transportation, that covers the cost of the checker you see at the grocery store. You know that. We've done that same kind of thing here with the, the cost of the services that you see for all the services that the city provides to the public. And so why did we do this? Well, the voters told us to. In 1979, they passed Proposition 4, which is a year after Proposition 13, and that was the GAN appropriation and, and as part of that, the voter said, you can charge a fee, but it can't be more than the full business cost of providing that service. And so that's what we've done here and that's why, why we did it. So this is a comprehensive study. We looked at all the user fees and all the potential user fees, things that you're either charging a fee for, could be charging a fee for. We looked at frankly, all the services that you provide, just not, of course, most of what you do, you're not going to charge a fee for. You're not going to, and we'll get into that in, in a few minutes. We looked at rents, use permits, we looked at parking enforcement fines. This is not impact fees or in-lu fees or utility rates, these are user fees. And as part of this, you know, it's a good reason to review your fees, review your fees is to stay updated on your costs, stay updated on your policies as a city as to what you want to charge and who you want to charge. So we looked at all the current fees that the city's charging, we added, we removed, we redefined fees. We wanted to make sure they're legally defensible. Again, you can't charge more than the cost reasonably borne, so we identified what that cost was. So we basically, as through this process, identified a ceiling for what your fees could be. Wanted to make sure that certain ones, you're actually collecting revenue and for certain fees, especially in the community services area, there's more market demand that you need to be aware of. So how did we do it? So we need to identify what are all the various services that you could charge a fee for or are charging a fee for. We sat down with every department, we went through their current list, we brought in list of, of fees that I've seen in other cities. Hey, do you guys do this? Do you guys do that? We redefined the fees where it made sense to re-categorize things. Maybe it was three categories and then we need five, or it was three categories and we only need one. So we started out with the departments going through that. Then we identified who's spending time on all the various different services. How much time are they spending? How many of these do you do? And we went through that and through that. And I really want to thank staff for all the time that you guys spent with me going through all these services because it really was a tremendous amount of time spent by staff on this because they're the ones that have this information. Where is, where is our staff spending their time? Click through here. Lot more clicks here than I thought. And so now we need to know what are the costs. So for every position in the city, we identified, we calculated a fully allocated hourly rate for every position. What's their salary? What are the fringe benefits? What are the general operating expenses within each department? And then on the overhead side, we had a citywide overhead where we have, we did a detailed cost allocation plan where we spread out the administrative costs. So we allocated the cost to city council, at city manager, finance, HR, facility maintenance. So when we're identifying, these are the costs that, they're not providing services to the public, but they're providing services to other parts of the organization so that they're able to do their job. We looked at departmental overhead. Some cases, we looked at divisional overhead. So in essence, what we're, again, the business, what a business would charge to know what your costs are, your full cost of providing services to your customers. So then we needed to match up that time detail with that fully allocated hourly rate. So now we know what are the costs of all these various different services. We sat down with staff again and we went through, here's your fee, here's your cost. And so in most cases, we recommended a 100% cost recovery, especially in the development services area, public safety area mostly, and making sure they're legally defensible and making sure that that cost recovery did make sense. There were, there were some in here that we said, okay. Regardless of what council says, we feel that there are certain fees in here, we're going to recommend a subsidy. And then community services is just a whole different animal, market demand, there's, there are certain groups within the community you're going to want to subsidize, youth or seniors or whatever the case may be, but community services is, we didn't look at that as 100% cost recovery. Which brings us here to tonight. We're presenting the results, we're going to certainly talk about it and answer any questions and get, as, as part of this process, not tonight, but in resulting meetings, hopefully be able to talk about changes to the fee schedule to implement the policy of the council. And we're also going to talk about tax services versus fee services. So tax-supported services, community-supported services, those things when people say, what do my tax dollars pay for? These are the things that their, your tax dollars pay for. Police, fire, streets, parks, code enforcement. On the other side, there's fee-supported services or what we call personal choice services. The customer's identifiable, the service is measurable. Importantly, it benefits an individual or a group and not the broader community. You can still subsidize these fees, you can't charge more than the cost, but as a council, you can decide, decide to charge less than the cost. So development services are a good example of a personal choice fee service. So another way to look at this, I'm kind of a picture person, is in California local government, again, you've got fees and taxes. Taxes are designed to support community-supported services. Fees are designed to support personal choice services. But to the extent that the fee does not cover the cost of providing the service, that service is being provided. The costs are occurring. Question now is who's going to pay for it? So if the fee's not high enough, the only other place to pay for it is from taxes. So that means you have less tax dollars to spend on other things that only taxes can pay for, like police and fire and streets and parks. So as part of this process, we identified about 11.4, 11.5 million dollars in subsidies. Now, that's a big number. We don't think as part of this that you're going to recover 11.5 million dollars. In actuality, it's going to be a much smaller number. We think a realistic cost recovery based on the recommendations in this report is a little under $900,000. And why the difference? So if we look at the different rows there, we see community development, largely we're getting cost recovery. Building and safety, we, we need some, some increases there and, and there's still going to be some subsidies and we can certainly talk about that more. Public safety, there's certain things within that that are, you're never going to recover cost recovery on, police false alarm response, noise disturbance response. And then community services, the big number there is community services that they're not designed to, for cost recovery. We do have some minor fee recommendations, some minor fee changes for community services in Appendix E of the report, but we're not projecting any, any revenue, new revenue because of those. So that's really the big reason why there, you go from 11.5 to a little under $900,000. Most of the fee recommendations, most of the new revenue from the fee recommendations are going to come out of the community development area, planning, building, engineering. So when we get to the report itself, it's a big report, there's a lot of detail. Basically, everything we did, we threw in there. The first 30 pages or so, 35 pages or so are the explanatory text. What did we do? How did we do it? Some of the things I just went over. When you get to chapter four, pages 21 through 30, there's some summary tables. And so for every service that we identified in here, there'll be an S number. And so here we have the first row there, an S, conditional use permit. Conditional use permit's currently bringing in around $21,000 a year. All the CUPs combined bringing around $21,000. Problem is, it's costing about $92,000. So you're subsidizing it to the tune of about $70,000 every year, just on one service, just conditional use permits, because you're only recovering about a quarter of your cost. So we're saying if you increase that to 100% cost recovery, there'll be an increase in revenue of about $71,000. And so each one of these services has this row. What's the current revenue? What's the current cost? What's the subsidy? And is there potentially revenue with the recommendations? So now you go, well, what is the fee? If you follow that to Appendix A, every one of those S numbers has the current fee and the proposed fee. And so you can see this conditional use permit's going from around, I can't read it real close, $1,200 to around $5,000. So there's a big increase there. So you'll be able to see, there's some big increases here and we could certainly talk about that. Then you go, why does this conditional use permit cost almost $5,000? Well, that takes you to Appendix B. So in Appendix B, there's even smaller numbers. I'm not even going to pretend to read. Each service has these two matching pages. On the left-hand side, you'll have a description of the service. Below that, there'll be what the city's current fee is. Below that, there'll be a revenue and cost comparison. So you're probably looking at around page 70 or so.
48.
If you're flipping through a report. So if you go to the bulk of the report and just open it up, there'll be these two matching pages for every service. Yeah, the big meaty part of the report. There'll be a revenue and cost comparison, both on a per-unit basis or an annual basis. The cost will come from the right-hand page. On that right-hand page, you'll see which staff is involved, how many hours are spent, how many of these do you do? What's their cost fully allocated applied to the service? So you can see what is the unit cost of this service and what is the annual cost for this service. And that's all that time detail that we spent getting from, with, working with staff. So we'll certainly go back and go into more detail with more questions. After that, there's some supplementary appendices. Appendix C, building fee changes. We're recommending a 50% increase in building fees. Right now, you're only recovering about 50% of your cost for building. So we're recommending that you increase that. Appendix D will have all your parking citations. We're not recommending any changes to the parking citations. We just wanted it to be part of the master fee resolution. And then Appendix E will have community services. And again, we kind of break that out where we're looking at just direct cost. So you can see what are the direct costs of the programs being provided and what's the cost recovery for that. And there'll also be the fee recommendations there. And we'll hopefully get into more detail as we talk more about community services. So there's a lot going on in this report, but one thing to remember, follow that S number. That S, if you want to know, okay, you're looking at in chapter four, S 25. This has a, we're only recovering 10%. Why is that? Go to Appendix A, find S 25. You can see where the fee is and where the fee is proposed to go to. Why is that fee going to be so high? Now you can go to Appendix B where it has all the detail. Who's involved? How much time they're involved? And so you can see that. So our goal was to identify the full cost for the various services provided by the public, provided by the city to the public that either are being charged a fee or could potentially be charged a fee. We've made fee recommendations for every of those, every one of those services, but it's now up to the city council to decide which services should be charged the full cost and which services should be subsidized with tax dollars. Because again, the costs are occurring. The question now is who's going to pay for the cost? Group or person receiving the benefit of the service or the broader community? And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Are there any comments from council? Questions or comments? Okay, I asked for a motion. From council?
Recommend it. Question for approval. So moved. Do you ask for approval or this is a?
Yeah, we're not asking for approval today.
No, not a, excuse me. Okay, then I'll just, okay, Ms. Lewis, may you please have a roll call? Or are we at that point?
At the, we would, staff is requesting direction from city council.
So it's a consensus? Is that what you want or you want a motion?
Yeah, we are requesting direction as to whether to schedule this item at the next council meeting as a public hearing to then adopt the, consider adopting the fee schedule that was presented or any other direction from council. If you have any other additional comments or questions you wish to make regarding the matter.
You don't need a formal discussion, you just need consensus.
A consensus only?
Yeah, yeah, direction to proceed to schedule the item at the next meeting as a public hearing or any other action.
I, quick question, Madam Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
So if we schedule it to be put on the next agenda and we have some questions that affect the report, are we okay? If we schedule it to be put on and we make those item changes at that one? Or does it have to be presented as is and approved as is? Yeah, it wouldn't be about increasing the fees.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Okay, okay, I just want that option, want to know that we have that option. Okay, so I'm fine with it being placed on, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so we'll have the motion to schedule the next meeting on the agenda? Oh, excuse me, go ahead.
Peggy, can you please repeat what you were asking?
So I was just asking if while we have the report, if we come up with some questions that cause it to change, are we okay to go ahead and request it to be put on the next agenda or what we say now has to be what's presented? And according to the city attorney note, we can make changes unless they're increases. So you can't recommend any additional increases after this, but you could recommend?
A wording change?
Wording, decreases or?
Yeah.
Yes, and there's a posting process where this will be. Do you want to explain that in case you get questions from the public?
With the public hearing for fees, you have 14 days before the public hearing, you have to identify, you have to notify those people who have asked to be notified that there's a fee change coming.
So 14 days before the next meeting is the cutoff deadline?
No, you still can, my understanding, you still can make changes at the council meeting. It's just been presented, this is a public hearing, here's what staff is recommending, but it's still, the council can still make changes. You're not going to have increases in fees because we've basically put in here what the ceiling is. So we feel if you do increase fees, you're charging more than your cost and I know you don't want to do that. So you, yeah, this is not the end of the discussion, this is not the end of the questions, this is not the end of the changes.
Next agenda.
So we have that prerogative?
Yes.
We place it as is on the next agenda. Okay.
Okay, so I asked for a motion?
So you, no, you just say, is everybody okay with it?
Is everyone okay? Okay, then we move on.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
I would like to confirm what the city clerk, is a motion required? A motion is not required.
The attorney told us no. I already asked.
So we do not need a roll call for anything, then we don't?
No, as long as there is consensus and I'm hearing consensus that the council agrees to schedule this on the next meeting.
Right.
All right, next. Thank you so much. There are no items under the environmental sustainability section or agenda for the evening?
Item 11.
Oh, excuse me. Oh, I'm so sorry.
11.
It's the best presentation of all evening.
Oh, excuse me. Yes, I overlooked it.
Yes, you did, Madam Mayor.
Oh my goodness, okay.
The most exciting part.
The exciting, okay. Our last item, new business, is consideration of the 2025 city special and holiday events scheduled. Ms. Chavez, may we have the report, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. It's that time of year when our community services department prepares and presents the entire list of city special events for the next calendar year for city council review and approval. And this early planning is very helpful, as you know, because it allows staff time to schedule vendors and secure services and materials and just plan for staffing needs overall as well. So we ask for council's input this evening on the staff events proposed for the specific dates. And I will now turn it over to our community services director, Jacenia Guillen.
Thank you, Ms. Chavez. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. As Griselle mentioned before tonight, is a proposed list of special events for the city of Paramount, calendar year 2025. You know, we haven't finished calendar year 24, but like Ms. Chavez mentioned, we do want to get ready for 2025, so here we are. I'm pleased to announce that Friday night Paramount will continue their monthly markets returning on March 7th, 2025. As many of you know, we go dark from November through February due to the holidays and the colder nights, which typically results in low attendance. Therefore, we're kicking off our Friday night Paramount in March of 2025. In the spring of 2025, you can expect the following events. We're looking forward to our annual eco-friendly fair, which has created an opportunity for community to learn about creating a sustainable future. And in our going events, to bring events to different parts of the city, we will continue to organize two of our pop-up events. The first one is scheduled for February 7th and the second for May 23rd. The exact locations aren't yet to be determined. I'll be back with council with those locations. The annual eco-friendly fair this year will return under the coordination of our public works department on April 5th, but community services working very closely with them as well. The community art show will take place on May 17th, which is wonderful opportunity to showcase our local talent and enjoy some of the incredible art that our community has to showcase. Get your running shoes ready or your walking shoes. We're bringing back our Paramount 5K, 1K event scheduled for May 31st. Moving on to our summer events, we're kicking off our season with our annual summer concert series. Our summer concert series is set to start from June 19th through August 9th. But on July 3rd, we're inviting everyone to come celebrate early their 4th of July with us at one of our summer concerts. The Heritage Festival will take place on the first Saturday of August with a new timeframe of 5:00 to 9:00 PM in our downtown. We heard, we heard our community and we know it's warm, so we decided to move it back in hours. So hopefully the heat actually cools down then, so. As the summer winds down, our, don't miss our fifth annual back-to-school event on August 9th, where families can gather for essential resources to prepare for our upcoming school year. This has definitely been a huge event for us, so reaching our, to our vendors and our barbers that are super important has happened now with our thank you notes. So hopefully they mark their calendar, so we'll continue to keep in touch with them. Finally, we'll wrap our summer events with our art walk over FNP on September 5th. This is also a different opportunity for our creative community to come out and admire our local art along with our FNP. We move on to our fall 2025 events. We kick off our season with our annual Hoot Nanny on Saturday, October 18th. This event has been a huge success and our spots are always so immediately. We had a great success this last Saturday. We were able to open our spots for 40 additional residents, so they had a great time. We continue with the Halloween haunted house and our Halloween festival that take place at the end of October. The Paramount Veterans Living History Celebration will honor our vets on Saturday, November 8th. I did want to mention that this year will serve an opportunity for us to reflect on how better we can engage our community. We've noticed the different trend that we've done with our veterans seems to have low attendance at this event. So one potential avenue that we're considering is to reimagine this event by hosting an outside city, at a city hall, similar to our Memorial Day ceremonies, bringing something different on actual Veterans Day. So something we'll continue to keep a close eye on this year and we'll bring something to you next year.
Yes.
And finishing up our fall season with our senior Thanksgiving, which we held on Thursday, November 20th. We move on to the most magical season of the year, where we're kicking off our winter 2025 with our tree lighting ceremony on Wednesday, December 3rd, along with our beloved Santa train, which will be from December 8th through the 11th. And we conclude our holiday season with our Snow Fest on Saturday, November 13th. But this year, something new that we obviously have and we're going to keep a close eye on is shopping under the lights with Santa. So this year will be a year that we will actually reflect, see what the community needs and actually, if it's actually a great day to do it the same day as Snow Fest. So we keep, we'll keep an eye out, really engage the community and see if this is actually the great day to do it. If so, we'll continue to do it the same day as Santa Snow Fest.
Can you explain what that shopping under the lights is, so I have clarity?
Absolutely, and I'm sure Andres Gonzalez can help me. This event actually is actually under admin services, but Andres, if you want to?
Andres has been a key visionary and lead for this event.
So as you guys know, last year, we upgraded the lighting over at the downtown area with all these awesome Christmas lighting, holiday lighting. So this year, we're taking a step further and we want to encourage residents to come out, experience those lights on a different level. I don't know, for some reason, people enjoy coming out and just walking across the street with no limits. So we're closing down that from Alondra to Jackson Street and encouraging businesses to come out, engage with their community. And on top of that, we'll have some photo ops, we're going to have those nice lights up again this year. And then people will have the opportunity to not only shop and engage with those business owners on the downtown, but also take photos with the nice lights and maybe getting their last-minute holiday photos in. So that's just a snippet. I'm sure we're going to have more information coming soon, but that's shopping under the lights with Santa.
Is it during the day, night? Or you don't want to get that out yet?
Yes, I mean, yeah, we can bring it up. It's nighttime from 7:00 to 10:00 PM. That's what we have.
They're going to have it follow the snow day. So they have that audience from snow day and go from snow day to go shop under the lights.
Right.
Kind of a daytime fun for the kids and then nighttime too for the whole family.
Got it.
Yeah, so it's a brand-new event. Again, if you guys are friends or have networks with your business friends over in the downtown area, please let them know. We're still encouraging them to participate and we're still doing our due diligence along with the Chamber of Commerce to get them out there. But nonetheless, folks will be able to come out and enjoy those lights on an open boulevard, closed, safe, and hopefully having some great photo opportunities.
So no booths? I'm sorry, there's no booths? It's just like the street being closed and like?
Exactly. We'll have some characters out there, photo opportunities, and again, encouraging those.
Don't forget Santa.
Are we having Christmas carolers?
There will be carolers out there.
Oh, wonderful. Sounds like fun.
Yes.
And the important thing is if anybody knows any of the businesses downtown personally, we want them to offer specials. And then the city will promote them so that we can get people to go visit their businesses that night and introduce them.
That's a good idea.
And invite all of our colleagues from our surrounding cities and tell them, come shop Paramount for one night, even, you know, to come have something to eat at one of our little unique eateries.
Yeah, and I think Vice Mayor, thank you, Andres, sorry. Vice Mayor and council members, our goal here is to invite them from Snow Fest. We have a captured audience there and, you know, working with admin services, we love Andres and their team. So we told them, give us ideas, give us coupons so we can promote, do raffles on our stage and invite them over to shopping under the lights. So it's concurrently, you're out, you're about, so walk over and see the lights and shop.
But there's a stage? So we have a stage?
I'm not sure if he's having a stage, no stage?
No stage, okay.
We have a stage over at the Santa Snow Fest.
Right, right.
So we really are encouraging the community to walk on over and shop under the lights.
They're going to use, they're trying to use like ambassadors from the chamber to be like the elves out on the street, trying to get them to go to the different businesses.
Didn't you want to be an elf? I thought I heard you say that. I'm an elf, okay. Just in case you had an extra costume.
Christmas magic, disappear.
Sorry.
As you were. Yes, okay, I'll continue.
Madam Mayor, I have a question. Yes, yes, council member.
Jacenia, it's been brought to my attention, the art exhibit that is at Progress Park, that's been brought to me by several residents. Those are the winners that won when I was mayor 2022 and some of the parents asked me if that's going to be changed. Is there a mayor's award that you did this year for the art? That going to be replaced every year?
That's our goal. That's actually part of the rotating art program that we have. So unfortunately, it hasn't been as successful as we thought in regards to receiving art. So we have been working with the school. Some of the artwork that we've been hoping to receive also with the community art reach is getting artwork in those dimensions to be able to post at our city facilities. So moving forward with our new community art walk, what we're hoping is really having those dimensions and really emphasizing the artists to do their art in that size of art. You know, obviously, art comes in all shapes and forms, not necessarily in just, you know, painting and color pencils. So we really leave it open to the community. So unfortunately, we did get some new art, which actually is at the community center and the one at Plaza has been there since 2022, which is amazing, but we're really just emphasizing and getting the community out there. So we'll continue to promote and we'll continue to hopefully get some more student artwork so we can change artwork.
Okay, because one of the parents was, her child was a winner, Congresswoman Baragon, and she wanted to know if her child's art was going to be displayed.
Was it this year?
This year. Because I went, I went to her art exhibit and when she presented the awards, because their art goes to Washington DC.
Oh, wow, okay, well, maybe I can connect with you, council member.
Anyway, so she thought the city would also present her child's?
Absolutely. I mean, we have an opportunity to display her artwork. We're happy to do so.
Okay, I'll let her know.
Okay, we'll do.
Okay, any more questions or comments from council?
Mayor, I'm gonna, I have two more slides, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. We also have our co-sponsored events. These events provide the city with the unique opportunity to work with our local nonprofits. We have our Tapic Dia de Niños, Saturday, April 12th, which is at Paramount Park. Again, we'll be assisting Tapic with our Easter Akon and our, of course, our third annual storytime with our city council, so be ready. And May 1st, we have the National Day of Prayer, that we work with our clergy very closely with this. And again, our Latinas Out Foundation with our two-day festival, Dia de los Muertos Chantolo, on November 1st and November 2nd. And as you see on this slide, council, December obviously is a busy month, so there is a few meetings that we either are proposing to go dark or just rescheduled. So we're asking to move the planning commission meeting on Wednesday, November 3rd, I'm sorry, December 3rd, to either go dark or move the meeting to another date because of our tree lighting event. The Santa train will operate December 8th to the 11th, therefore proposing that we move our city, our first city council meeting from Tuesday, December 9th to the following Tuesday, December 16th. This will in turn require the December Public Safety Commission meeting be moved from December 16th to either go dark or move to another date. So in previous years, council has chosen to cancel the second meeting for the city council and we're proposing the same for 2025. meeting for the city council, and we're proposing the same for 2025. And with that, it is recommended that the city council approve or modify the proposed dates for calendar year 2025. And that concludes my presentation.
I have a question, Madam.
Yes, go ahead. Thank you.
Are you dictating on those ones, those commission meetings that you said?
No, we're not. We're just proposing for them to go dark.
I didn't ask a question yet. To go dark, or you want a recommendation from us, or you just want it open to do what you want to do when it comes about?
We're actually just proposing either for them to modify the date or go dark. So that really, we're leaving it up to the commission themselves.
So you'll leave it to the commission?
Correct. Approve or modify.
Can a commission go dark? Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
They can?
The planning commission hasn't gone dark in many years. Most likely, they will be moved to the day before. Most likely.
That's saying we can. A planning commission can go dark.
They could.
Okay.
Okay, now.
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember, but that's, city attorney, do we?
We're looking at potential planning commission items for the second.
For 2025.
Okay.
Okay, are we ready to move on? Any more questions? All right. Okay, now I'll ask for a motion.
So moved, second.
All right. Ms. Lewis, may we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Aguayo.
Yes.
Councilmember Olmos.
Yes.
Councilmember Quera Stallings.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lemmons.
Yes.
Mayor Delgado.
Yes. Okay, there are no items under the environmental sustainability section of our agenda this evening. And now it is time for comments and committee reports. We'll start with Vice Mayor Lemmons, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
So I, excuse me, I attended my monthly C I A meeting. We are still in negotiations with the unions over there. And I would just like to assure the public that we are doing everything we can. We love our C I A employees and we're doing everything we can to try to come to consensus with the unions. Also attended the aesthetics meeting and we got pretty far along in the landscaping of the future for the city of Paramount. And I also attended the public safety fair that staff put on. You did an amazing job. I was there early in the morning when it opened and there was already a big crowd, which surprised me. So I'm sure it got really busy throughout the day and everybody looked like they were having a great time and brought home some terrific mosquito repellent. Really worked. What they were handing out there was really good. And lastly, attended the J P I A conference, had an opportunity to speak on collaboration with elected officials. So we appreciate the opportunity to share all the good things that are happening in the city of Paramount with all of our partners. And heard a workshop that was put on by Cal OSHA about new laws that are coming down the pipe and in effect for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Councilmember Aguayo.
Okay, so I do have a few things. So I also was at the Public Safety Expo. However, I was there before it opened. I had to go to work. So I, I had a conversation with some of the, you know, the deputies from the bomb squad. And one of them actually said how he loves our city. And he said, you know, I don't often, often get to come here, but this is a place I would definitely buy a house in. So, you know, said, you know, I mean, just make sure you look, you know, keep looking. But yeah, so that was really great. And as always, I, you know, I have no doubt. I mean, unfortunately, I wasn't able to stay, but I'm sure, you know, I mean, it was just looking at, you know, a lot of the online stuff, that it was, it was a great event as always. I was also at J P I A and Councilmember Lemmons, I mean, you did an amazing job, really just because I know when we were out, you know, people, we could hear people commenting on, you know, just what our city does. And I think it's, we do so much for, for our little, you know, I call it our little town, you know, and we do so much and people have no idea what we do. I mean, little town, we put on big events and we do things big. So I was also at the Cal Cities Annual Conference. That is a huge event and there's so much information. But it's also great to see that, like, you know, of course, you know, I'm really invested in the arts and going to some of, there was actually this time around, there was a, there was a couple breakout sessions that I went to. And they were talking about same thing, collaborating with different partners within your community and how you can make these things happen. So that was really great to see. And the last thing is really, you know, kudos to our public works department. On Saturday night, when I went to pick up my daughter at crazy in the morning from work, the wall on Indiana was tagged, just, it was awful to see it at, you know, Saturday into Sunday morning, because I was like, it's, you know, Sunday, it won't be taken care of until Monday. Well, Monday morning, when I drove by, our team had taken care of it. So I mean, I was just really just happy to see that on, you know, it was a Sunday and they took care of it. And those are the things that again, make our community stand out from those around us. So thank you for that. I think that's all I have, actually.
Okay, thank you so much. Councilmember Olmos?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll be very brief. You guys already talked about the Public Safety Expo. Congratulations, Peggy. You did a great job. I drove up to Palm Springs just to see her and then I drove her back home. So that was a turnaround trip to support my colleague. I also attended the Cal Cities event. I think Councilmember Aguayo already mentioned, the topic of the, the session was called building vibrant communities, how you leverage partnerships. And they made us play that little game where you kind of enter in, like they ask you a question and you play on your phone.
Yeah.
And the comment that they made was that a lot of people had put partnerships with school districts. And the actual moderator was like, I'm really shocked to see that up there. And I just thought that that was super unique about our city, that we do have the partnership with our school district. So that was interesting to hear, that you hear a lot of cities don't have that. So I thought that was kind of cool. I also went to a housing law discussion. They were talking about laws that impact how a city can and cannot control housing development. I thought that was super interesting. It was a Jeopardy game and like, yeah, I got all the answers wrong. So, we're trying to read off our notes and it didn't work. So we didn't win, Angela. The next one I went to was actually, it's called Winning Dollars for a City. Super interesting. And it talked about the best practices on security and grants for your city when it comes to infrastructure and resources. So learned a little bit about that and just curious too, like I'm just, I'll be reaching out so you can educate me on what we do for grants and how that works. So I just want to learn. And for Historical Society, we actually had our first meeting last night where we actually brought community members together. And we actually did some interviews last night on, people brought in some of their history that they had. We did some scanning of photos. I actually received two chairs last night from Lincoln School Elementary from the nineteen fifties. So they brought those and they're in my garage right now, but getting our storage unit very soon. But it was really nice just for these community members to come out and do these videos and talk about their stories. So that was our first one. We're going to start doing more. So we'll make sure we get that on on social media because we need more stories about our city. So thanks, John Key, for coming and giving all the information that you did last night. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much. Okay, Councilmember Quera Stallings.
Okay, I'm last. Okay.
No, I'm last.
That's okay. Well, I'll just, I attended the J P I A conference and Peggy, great job. I, I was so, you are a woman that keeps so much information of things that happened twenty, thirty years ago. But what I liked at the end is somebody said, great things are happening in Paramount. I go, yeah, that's why we're Paramount. And then I attended the Public Safety Expo. It was a blast for me to get on that motorcycle. Oh, I loved it. Brought back memories. My husband used to have a shopper back in the day and I used to ride around with him. But anyway, those were the days. But I loved being on that bike. And I told my husband, he couldn't believe I was on that bike. So anyway, you guys had great things. I just want to tell you, the community loved it. My neighbors were all excited. Es la Comarde's and the neighbors are walking in front of my house. They were like, that was the best. You know, they talked about the motorcycle. I said, of course, I got a motorcycle. So then I told them, and then the kids got on it. They talked about the bomb squad. They talked about the mosquitoes. They were so excited. So thank you. Thank you for doing that, all of you. And thank you, deputies, for all you do in our communities. We greatly appreciate it. And I know my neighbors do too. And last, I did attend the League of California Cities with my colleagues. It was very informative and the sessions that we took. But that's all I have. And I look forward to the Halloween events that we'll be having in, in about a week, about a week and a half. So come out, everyone, and enjoy our festive, and also Dia de los Muertos. Thank you. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Oh, thank you so much. Thank you. Well, before sunrise, I attended the Public Safety Expo also.
Before sunrise.
Before sunrise.
Before sunrise. The Expo gets, you know, it gets bigger and bigger. And the community enjoys the environment. They enjoy the free goodies. The kids are enjoying themselves. Hot dogs, decorating donuts. I loved it. I loved what I saw. And, you know, you guys are just wonderful. So thank you, staff, for all that you did to make it a success. Thank you. I attended the Lakewood Chamber of Commerce luncheon, which was to honor our speaker, Anthony Rendon. And, you know, it was a beautiful farewell and, you know, many blessings to him. And I attended the storytime with the mayor and I had a blast. You know, the children were lovely. I read the story Cats for Sale. And I couldn't ask for a wonderful audience. And it took me back to teaching and we're going to do it again next month. And staff, you did awesome. Thank you so much for the activities and all your support. Thank you. All right. Ms. Chavez, are there any comments from staff?
Not, no comments. Thank you.
Okay, closed session. Now the city council recess into closed session. Ms. Chavez, will you please read, announce the closed session item?
The item is a conference with labor negotiators under government code section five four nine five seven point six, covering the unrepresented employee position of city attorney.
Okay, thank you for now. We will break. Yes.
And you don't need to return for reporting out.
Okay.
We do not return?
No, not for this item.
Okay, thank you so much. So now I call the city council meeting. There will be no further business until November twelfth, twenty twenty four, at six P M. in the council chamber here at city hall. Thank you.